Okay, we'll call the January meeting of the Falls Township Planning Commission to order. Can we rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
John, you up to calling the roll?
Yep, Colin Henderson. Present. John Haney, present. Edward Crowe.
Present.
Brian Binney.
Present.
Yeah, Mary?
Apparently not.
Sorry, Mary.
Present.
We'll cut your slack when that happens. Alright, the first item on our agenda is to reorganize the board. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion for chairperson.
I nominate Brian Binney.
A second.
Call the board, please, John. I forget that. All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain. I make a motion to nominate Mary Leschuck as vice chair.
I'll second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there a motion for secretary?
I'll make a motion, I'll nominate Ed Crowe.
A second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Now, given the circumstances we had when John was sick, we had an issue where we couldn't get people to sign plans. So, in the chairperson's case, if I'm not available, Mary can sign. But in the secretary's case, there's nobody available. So I want to make a motion that we appoint John Haney as the assistant secretary. In event that Ed can't sign the plans, then John can sign the plans.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Colin, we'll have to come up with something for you. I don't know.
I'm good, I'm new. So, you know what I mean, I'm just, I'll go with the flow for the first year.
Alright, the other thing is, everybody still good with the meetings being on the 4th Tuesday at 7:00 PM?
Yes.
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 That's all in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, very good. Alright, then we'll move on to our agenda items. First agenda item is Ella Weiser Prosha, 84 Everturn Lane, Levittown, PA. Conditional use to operate a single-chair hair salon for customers by appointment only. Do we have applicants?
We're bringing them in, we're bringing them in.
Okay, thank you.
The applicants are in.
Good evening.
How you doing?
Alright. So if you just want to give us a little brief rundown of what it is you're proposing to do here?
There you go. Okay, now my microphone's on. I don't know how to do this, I apologize.
That's fine.
I can read you a statement that I had my neighbor sign yesterday that basically describes everything. I think it would be the easiest unless you want it in my own words or in her own words.
Whatever you'd like to do.
Okay. Okay, so Beauty 84 is a hair salon located at 84 Everturn Lane, Levittown, PA. And is designed to accommodate one client at a time by appointment only. The salon will have a private, street-facing entrance and be equipped with one chair for hair services, a wash patient for hair care, a lavatory, and a laundry facility. Designated parking will be provided for off-street parking, eliminating traffic problems in front of the salon. Hours of operation will be determined by the needs of the clients and availability of the salon. The intent of the salon is to have the least amount of negative impact on the neighborhood as possible while providing a necessary service to those in need. I guess that would be like the mission statement or something.
Very good. So, the exhibits that you provided us, you had option one and option two. Is option one your preferred?
Yes, sir. That would allow for the driveway to be dedicated to the salon itself.
Now, have you done, I didn't see any calculation sheets in the packet. Have you done any calculations as to whether or not, if you put that driveway in, you've exceeded the maximum impervious surface in the building or the property?
I have not. I don't know what the maximum, I don't know what the maximum amount is. So no, I haven't.
And the... You're going to put a new door in?
Yes, sir.
In front of the house?
Yes.
And the door's still going to have a residential look to it, it's not going to have a storefront look to it?
Yes.
Does any of the boards have any question?
Yes, the driveway, so you have two driveways here, you're adding a driveway for two cars.
Correct.
It looks like, at least in proposal two, I'm not quite sure about proposal one. Where would, which driveway would the clients be using?
In proposal one, they would have a driveway exclusive to them. But it would be a finished driveway, as you can see in the photo that I provided of the front of the house for proposal one. There's a curb cutout, but I have...
So it would be the one that you're adding?
Correct.
Correct, okay. So, the handicap exit, or the handicap access, is there like, going to be kind of like a sidewalk area? And then like ramp up to the door because the door is closer to that driveway?
Correct.
So there will be like a bit of a sidewalk area so that someone could get in that way?
Correct, that's why I prefer the number one. Because I will be able to take the sidewalk and incorporate it right into the driveway so that you won't even know the rise, it'll be...
Okay. So, Ella, I have a question for you. You live at the house, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, one of the conditions of the home-based occupation is that it requires you to live there. So, when you move out, then you won't no longer be able to operate the salon there?
No, that wasn't the plan. I wasn't even aware of that, actually.
Well, she's only 22, so we got a few years before I'm marrying her off. We gotta get the dowry and all that in line before somebody...
So I just want to make you aware of that, that that's a requirement of the home-based occupation is that you have to live there. So, if that situation changes, it may impact your ability to continue to use that.
Okay, we understand that. Now we understand it anyway.
So, the conditional use allows us, exactly what it says, allows us to put reasonable conditions on the use of the property.
Okay.
And it lays out most of those conditions in the zoning book already. Does any other board members have any comment?
No.
No, I have none.
So, what I would propose is that we would allow you to operate the salon with the following conditions. That, number one is what I just said, that it can operate as long as you live there in accordance with the zoning ordinance. Number two is that the new door must maintain a residential look and that it doesn't look like a storefront. Number three is that there would be no signs out at the street. There would be allowed one sign to identify the entrance on the house or near the front door. And that you provide at least one off-street parking space for the customer parking. But you have to determine whether the pavement would meet the zoning requirements or not. So if it doesn't, then you may have to jump through another hoop and get a zoning approval to get a variance for the impervious surface coverage.
Okay, so that would just need an additional approval in order to put an additional driveway in if I exceed my coverage?
Right, so township, if you go on the township's website, they have a form where the impervious surface tells you how to calculate everything.
Okay.
You could do it yourself, I'm sure.
My wife tells me I'm not very good at math, so I probably have a problem with that.
Maybe she could do it for you. So, those would be my four conditions. And you want to put a driveway in anyway, so that's not even a problem. And the residential doorway is not a problem. So, as long as the other two, that's, I make a motion to approve the conditional use with those conditions that they're...
A second.
Could you call the board, please, Ed?
Yes, oh, right, yeah. Colin Henderson.
Yes.
John Haney.
Yeah.
Edward Crowe, I'm a yes. Mary Leschuck.
Leschuck. Yes.
Brian Binney.
Yes. So, we make a recommendation to the supervisors, so the next step is to go do the same thing with them and go through the process again. And our recommendation is to approve it with those four conditions.
So I should get on that impervious service thing to make, to present to them? They're going to want the answer to that question, I'm sure.
That question might come up, yes.
Okay, my one question to you is, so, I have the approval, if they say yes, to put the driveway in? If I don't exceed the surface?
Well, you'll still have to get permits from the township to install the driveway. But, one of the things they're going to ask you when you go there is if you're exceeding the impervious surface area.
Okay. So I could just say no, though, right? I don't think I am, but...
Don't go by the measurement of how much square footage is impervious versus how much isn't. And don't do the math on that, and you have to be with, you have to be under that. Depending, depending on your zone, it's a percentage. It's either 35 or 40%, or it could be up to 45, depending on what you're zoned.
It's NCR, so it is probably 40%.
Yeah. So I mean, do you have a pool or like a big shed in the backyard or anything?
I do, but I have a really huge piece of property, so...
Yeah, I look...
Then you might be alright.
I looked at the aerial and it kind of looks like you might be okay to me, but...
Well, I got my fingers crossed, but...
Alright, well, you could say no to them, but I don't know how that squares with your police background, so...
Only three more days, then I don't have any...
Three more, nice, good for you, stay safe.
Congratulations.
Alright, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you, we appreciate it, have a nice day. Bye-bye.
There was no public comment for that, by the way.
Just wanted to...
Thanks. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, we'll move on to the second item on our agenda, and that's North Point, Phase One. River Road, Fairless Hills. Preliminary final land development, Phase One, 1 million square foot warehouse. Eric, we expect a mic?
Everybody's coming in, there's a few people.
Yeah, Mike's on, he just has to come through.
Everybody's in.
Good evening, everyone. Mike, how you doing?
Doing well, good evening, how are you tonight?
It's your show.
Right, well, we have a, quite a crew with us tonight, so I'm not going to try to introduce everybody. But we do have a number of members from the North Point team. I know we have a number of members from Gilmore Associates, and we also have Mark Roth here, I know, from McMahon, to address any traffic-related concerns. Obviously, we were in front of the planning commission previously to discuss the master site plan for the development of the former United States Steel Site, which I can now happily say is truly the former US Steel Site as North Point did acquire the property. This is particularly related to Phase One of the project. And I will, I think mercifully, avoid a song and dance about who North Point is and what they're trying to accomplish, you've all heard that before. So I'll skip that part of what we'd normally cover in a presentation like this. And really just briefly address the fact that Phase One consists of developing a warehouse, which is approximately a million square feet in size. This is on the portion of the property that we're still sort of classifying as the mother parcel, the 13-51-1 parcel. The net lot area is approximately 100 acres, a little bit larger than that. This specific location in the park is to the north-northeast, just to orient the planning commission. We did supply a pared-down PowerPoint. We have a few elevations within that PowerPoint to share with the project. But again, this particular building is part of what North Point's identified as Phase One and should consist of one of three buildings in Phase One. We've gone over everything in the applicable review letters from Joe Jones' office, from Remington and Burnick, the Fire Marshal, the Bus County Planning Commission. Everything is, will comply, and our consultants will certainly continue to work in tandem with the township to address any issues that will arise during the rest of the process. Everything is a will comply. The only two waivers that we're requesting pertain to curbing and an existing features waiver. We can certainly address those, or obviously any technical questions that the planning commission could have after the presentation. I believe Jed Momont is with us on North Point's end. I think he would like to give a bit of a further explanation about this particular site, what they're hoping to accomplish at this location for this particular phase, why this particular location has been selected to move forward with first. And then we'd certainly be happy to field any questions the planning commission might have. So, if it's alright with you, what I'd like to do is just turn this over briefly to Jed to address this particular Phase One.
Oh, go ahead, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you and good evening, members of the planning commission. I'm assuming that you can see my screen okay. I'm sharing a PowerPoint presentation, I see some heads nodding. So, we'll go through this rather quickly. As Mike mentioned, we have been in front of this before and have presented, you know, the larger vision of the Keystone Trade Center project. So, tonight, wanted to just focus on Phase One and Building One. Really excited to kind of kick off the development with the first piece. We would, you know, would love to move the schedule and the construction of this building as quickly as possible. So just a quick overview of our team, we have added many team members to the Keystone Trade Center development team. So, just an overview of those folks. We can distribute these slides later and contacts for these folks if you'd like them. But this is our onsite team located in Kansas City, Cincinnati, St. Louis, and locally there in Fairless Hills. Just a really quick overview, again, this is part of a large project up to 15 million square feet, the Keystone Trade Center. This is Phase One, Building One, which is a million-square-foot building. It is a speculative building, meaning that we do not have a tenant in tow yet. We are responding to multiple requests of interest from tenants and working on filling the building as we speak. Just for a sense of orientation, Phase One, we've drawn a box around where Phase One and Building One is located. We're going to develop that side of the site first, which as you enter the park, it will be on your left-hand side. It'll be the easternly side of the property, formerly known as the pipe mill area, what many people who are familiar with the US Steel Site call the area. We do have a three-building plan in mind for Phase One, and again, this is building one of three. We do have some of the traffic counts, peak hour trips, both for truck and passenger cars, noted on the bottom of the slide here, of course, that is also noted in the traffic report and the response from the Traffic Engineering Review firm. So we did use ITE 154, which is high cube warehousing, which is the most appropriate use for what we build. And as you'll note there, 60 passenger cars in the peak hour trip, 20 trucks, and then in the afternoon, 90 and 10. So those numbers are noted there below. Again, we're showing the access routes. Won't go too much in-depth here, other than to say that Tyburn Road is our access point for truck traffic. And trucks will only be able to go in and out of Tyburn Road, which is the, as you'll note, you know, the four-lane divided roadway most appropriate for semis. So this is our master sketch plan, which you saw in the previous presentation. I've noted, building number one is outlined in red. Building number two and three are also within that Phase One. So Building One is the 1 million square foot building. Again, access to the site is off of River Road, which is an existing roadway. The specific site plan does show a modification to River Road to rebuild River Road in portions or relocate, readjust, however you want to term it. But we will be realigning River Road in order to work with this site plan. So, just for sense of access, as you go into Pennsylvania Avenue and into the park, you will continue and hang left on River Road, and that will access Phase One. This is the specific site plan. We have some of the stats noted here to the right. Again, we will build these buildings out of concrete, tilt-up construction. They aren't metal structures, we do have a steel joist and girder and column. But all of the perimeter walls are concrete, poured-on-site, tilt-up. Some of the buildings we may choose to do precast, but this project will likely be a tilt-up building. The inside clear height, meaning the distance from the floor to the bottom of the joist, is 40-foot clear, which is kind of standard of the industry in warehousing. And, you know, that's really the minimum ceiling clear height that a user like Amazon, Walmart, or another large e-comm user would require for their racking and stacking of product. Total building height, this includes a parapet, is around 50 feet. And we note the dock doors, parking stalls, trailer stalls, as well as ADA spaces and drive-in entrances, all on this slide. More is better in terms of parking and trailer stalls with this product. Most of the users do want as many trailer storage parking stalls as possible. So we've tried to accommodate that into this plan. And again, we have the two waivers requested that Mike mentioned here below regarding the curbs and the various existing features. Agree with Mike that all of the review letters are a will comply, and our team is, you know, focused on making the appropriate plan updates and resubmitting to comply with all of the review letters. Quick view of the elevations. So you get a sense of undulation in the building, the color schemes, the glass and glazing on the corners, and also, you know, generally what the building will look like in length and dock positioning. So, in a building of this size, a million feet, it will likely be a single-tenant building or maybe a two-tenant building, it will not be subdivided heavily. We generally see a building of this size go to a single user, maybe two users, but most likely a single user. And lastly, here are a couple examples of buildings that we've constructed across the US. So just a, you know, putting the elevations in real-life photos, this is generally what we will build to, the sense of scale and quality, Class A industrial warehousing product. And last slide here, just as a overview of our schedule. Again, we're here before you tonight to gain permission, request an approval of Phase One, Building One. We do intend to submit for our demolition permit for Phase One. Demolition will consist of at-grade foundations and structures from the previous buildings that were on the site. There are no vertical buildings, there are only at-grade concrete slabs and foundations. Are also some old rail tracks that will be removed. But generally speaking, the demo is pretty light. Will then, in April, submit for our mass grading. And ideally start site work and building shelf work in June and July with the intent to deliver a beneficial... with the intent to deliver a beneficial occupancy, which what we like to call a temporary certificate of occupancy by the end of the year. That would allow a tenant to begin hiring employees and bringing people into the building and stocking it. And then final completion sometime early Q1 of next year. So again, this is the first building of Phase One. We intend to here soon in Q1 or early Q2 submit Building Number Two and follow with Building Number Three likely sometime this summer. So more to come in Phase One, but this is the first one out of the chute. And love to answer any questions that anyone on the commission may have. And like I said, we're excited to get started with our first phase out here.
So I have one quick question. Knowing the history with some of these buildings, at what point would a tenant come in to put in material handling equipment? Or if they need a mezzanine or a second floor, would that be through the August to November timeframe that's not marked off there?
Yeah, that's a really good timeframe. So I would say if a tenant, let's say, let's just use Amazon for building the building and they come in maybe midway, they would then give us their office spec requirements. And within that, they usually have their material handling, they have their mezzanine requirements, any, you know, additional parking requirements. And we would come in for, you know, either a plan revision or a permit request for tenant improvement. And we would have, you know, mezzanines or handling equipment and, you know, tenant equipment in that package.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. When you guys came in front of us in the beginning, one of the things that you had mentioned was that one of your first primary things was to do the remediation of the 30% of the contaminated land. And I just want to know what your guys, when are you guys planning on starting that or planning on finishing that?
Good question that I should have addressed that early on. So the answer is immediately that will be started really simultaneous with the demo and site work. So on this property, there's about 30 to 40% of the property that still needs to be remediated. You know, US Steel did, you know, around 60% of the remediation. Yeah, the balance of that will be done by us in these various phases. And this first phase has a significant portion of remediation that happens.
So as moving forward, is that, are you with this? Obviously, I know you guys want to get up and get started and have revenue coming in and everything like that. But are you going to continuously do all of the remediation? Are you going to do the remediation as your building? In the future, not so much for this project.
Yeah, it'll be a little bit of both. So Phase One has a fair amount of that remediation. I think it's Phase Three and Phase Four has a fair amount of remediation as well. So our plan is, is Phase One will have remediation and vertical construction all happening at the same time. On a parallel path, we will likely be submitting for other demo grading and then really, really demo and grading permits because the remediation, the plan of remedial action is actually bringing soil and cap the site. So in order to do that, we'll need grading permits throughout some of the future phases. So we'll be requesting grading permits in advanced phases here pretty soon for Phase Three and Four and where some of these large barrel pits are. And if you'd like, we can show you on the master plan really quickly where those are at. Let me pull that slide up. But the remediation is mostly removing the barrel pits. So these, if you go out there today, they look like really large ponds and they have water in them. So we'll have to drain those ponds. We'll have to remove the sludge and material that are in them. And then we'll have to refill them with soil. So it's actually a grading operation is what makes up most of the remediation. So I'm going to zoom in. Building number 12 goes on in that location. Building number 10 and 11 has a fair amount of remediation. And then up here in Phase One, Buildings, you know, 1, 2, and 3 have a fair amount of remediation. So all three of these areas will be tackling, you know, over these next one and two years to get that remediation complete. Good question.
Just out of curiosity, are you planning on bringing in specific construction personnel? Or are you planning on like hiring locally?
My internet connection jumped out there. I think the question was, will we bring in contractor? Will we hire a local contractor? Was that the question?
Yes, correct.
So we'll go to, we'll absolutely for the local construction trades and local construction market. And matter of fact, I think we've already got our demolition and grading bids in. And all of those are local contractors. We do work with a lot of national general contractors, but all of the trades are typically hired local.
Okay.
So I guess since this is the first phase of what is going to be many, I guess we just want to make sure we get it right and get the baseline. So when we come through here the next time and the time after that, then we can just get this thing done as fast as we can. So I guess there's some concern on my part and some concern on the Bucks County Planning Commission's part about not putting curbing in. Ultimately, the plan is to turn the roads over to the township. So the township specification is the roads have curbing. So and from what I see on your drainage plan, your drainage looks like everything goes, is going to get piped to the canal and then it's just going to dump into the river unless I'm reading that wrong. So I don't understand, I don't see how that's needed for drainage because you're piping everything.
Well, I don't know that the site is entirely piped. I'd say there absolutely is piping for conveyance of stormwater. But generally speaking, we don't, we don't 100% pipe our sites. Mostly it's conveyed over the top of the site into swales or canals or, you know, drainage ditches and then moved that way. You know, we try to, we try to stay away from as much pipe as possible, honestly. So, you know, to address the curb question, most of the roads that are out there are already constructed. And, you know, so the roads are kind of, they are what they are because they're already there. So to go back in and reconstruct, you know, really, we see that as, you know, something that may not be necessary with the type of internal truck traffic and internal users that we've got in the park. Now, obviously, if we're building new roadway headed out to the main, you know, vehicular access points on Tyburn or Pennsylvania, maybe that's a little bit different scenario. But the internal roadways and our typical park construction would not include any curb. So that's why, you know, really what the basis for the request is, is one, it's not our typical standard. Understand it would be for the townships, but two, it's the roads are existing. So they wouldn't be new road construction.
So when this is all built and the gates are gone, it's not unrealistic to imagine that there might be some public transportation going down here and dropping people off. So it might not be unrealistic to ask for certain sidewalks in certain places.
Yeah, agreed. And we would encourage and welcome public transportation inside the park. I think it's going to be a, not necessarily a demand, but something that all of the tenants are going to be asking about is, is what does public transit? And how is the park set up to accommodate, you know, employees? We're going to have 10,000 employees here. How are they going to get there is going to be a big question. So absolutely, I think it's our, it's our vision to have some type of public transit stops in the park and make sure that we, you know, if it's sidewalks or whatever it is that we need to install to accommodate that.
The traffic study only takes into account this Phase One operation. Wouldn't it make sense to just do traffic study for the whole thing and get it done with?
Yeah, you know, the intent was to get Phase One out of the gate. And I think our, you know, our development agreement acknowledges that as well, that the traffic study, we would focus on that in Phase Two. And it was really, you know, it was a factor of speed.
Just real briefly, Jed, to echo that, that was one of the items that we had covered in the development agreement to attempt to facilitate moving forward with Phase One as quickly as possible. An acknowledgement that, of course, we're going to be providing a master traffic study for the entire site. But with the understanding and agreement that for this first particular phase, that is going to be localized to this area. But before we come back for Phase Two, the master site traffic study is going to be supplied.
That's correct.
And there was a reasonable amount of comments on the traffic study from Remington-Vernick. So it seems like a decent amount of work has to be done to tweak that.
Going back to the sidewalk comments from before, were you, was that, was the end of that thought process that you wouldn't be willing to put them in currently, but you would eventually possibly put them in depending on how you wanted public transportation to work in this area? I don't think I fully understood your end thought process.
I think the way we envisioned it, and I believe we addressed this in the development agreement as well, was that, and Matt or Eric jump in if there's a misinterpretation of this. But I think the standard is sidewalk both sides of the street. I think we envisioned sidewalk on one side of the street. And that was the development agreement. I think we are, at least on new roadways, and as well as new development phases. So for example, Phase One, we would have, you know, sidewalk on the side of the street. But if we have, say for an example, a public transit stop and it doesn't connect via sidewalk, you know, it's my opinion, we'll need to get a sidewalk to connect to that. So if it's on, say, on the wrong side of the street, or if it's in a location that doesn't connect, you know, we'll need to make sure that connects.
Yeah, it's not just a deferred comment, Mary, where we'll look at that later. The intent is to install sidewalk. It's just going to be at the beginning, as Jed said, on one side of the street and then as needed adjusted moving forward. So that's not a hypothetical that we might address later. That is an intent we have now.
Okay.
I'm okay with one side of the street. I don't have an issue with that. One thing I did, I was looking at the grading plan and there's a substantial drainage ditch in front of the property. And where you're going to cross your road, new road in on the, as I'm looking at your picture on the left-hand side of your building there. It looks like you're filling that ditch and then you're leaving a hole on the left-hand side. Does that drain someplace or is that just going to be a hole filled with water?
Um, I think, I think the area you might be talking about, is it a wetland pond area?
No, it's right to the left-hand side of the access drive, proposed access drive. No, over to your left, over to your left, keep going, keep going, right there.
Okay. Yeah, I'd have to look at the plan a little closer to see if that's drainage or if that's one of the, you know, remnant, we call them borrow pits. They actually could be mistaken for old wet areas that you deal with material in. It might be one of those areas, Matt or Eric, if you have a.
Yeah, Jed, that's a borrow pit area we will be filling in. It's not wetlands, we'll just be simply filling in the area.
But even, it looked like you were filling in the area where the road was going, but it looked like you were going to leave a hole to the left-hand side. That was my concern that if you're going to fill the whole thing in, that's fine. But if you weren't going to fill it in and it was just going to be a hole, if it didn't drain someplace, it would just be a hole filled with water.
Yeah, it's not the intention to leave a hole in the ground. We'll address it. We'll get it cleaned up.
There are many areas, in Phase One, they show up, there's two or three of them that are former borrow pits that do have wetland features in them that will be, they'll eventually be filled as part of the Act Two program for remediation. So I will note that on Phase One, it happens in multiple places across the site, but it's not necessarily a wetland fill, it's more a borrow pit fill. But there is habitat and natural features in these areas. But it's, you know, it's necessary as part of the Act Two cleanup that those are filled, so.
Any other questions from the board? Comments, concerns? So everything is a will comply with the exception of these two waivers for everybody's review letter. One of my, one of the things I'm concerned a little bit about, and maybe you can explain it to us. So it looks like this Phase One building here has some kind of boundary around it. Is it a subdivision? Is it a lease hold? Is it, what is it?
Well, in the future, in the future, we will subdivide every building. So every building, we will create an individual lot. We want to, you know, create an individual tax parcel. So those, I don't know that those are on the agenda tonight, but those are forthcoming.
And just to reiterate, Jed, because I know this comment has come up and I want to state it clearly for the planning commission, that process is not with the intention that North Point is then going to go and sell each subdivided parcel to whichever user is coming in. You know, North Point has been very clear that the intention here is to, you know, retain ownership of the KTC or the KIPC, whatever you want to label it. So it is not the first step in a process to gradually convey these parcels to third parties. And Jed, feel free to correct me if I said anything wrong, but I did want to make that clear to the planning commission.
Well, on a natural level, where certain roads bisect the property, you're going to be creating those lots just because the roads are there. And it makes sense to do that, especially if the roads are going to get dedicated to township at some point in time. So, but one of the concerns I would have moving forward is how we're going to track all the impervious surface coverages and all those things. Now, if you said they're all going to be subdivided, then that makes it easier. But if they weren't going to be subdivided, then it gets a little more complicated.
Hey Jed, maybe you can slide to the overall or the detailed site view? And Brian, maybe I can address that. You can kind of see the yellow line. That's the lot line and it runs off into the, into the tabulations here. But we started with the Building One and that is the lot boundary. Just so we would know that when we go to a future subdivision plan, that we would have compliance with the zoning ordinance. So we have something to calculate impervious on and setbacks and lot width. We'll be preparing an overall subdivision plan and there'll be an initial submission of that. But we would literally see that with future buildings coming in, be submitted with a sort of a joint land development and a subdivision plan. And that would be updated and sort of like a running tabulation of each lot. So you can kind of track both on a site or on a lot-by-lot basis and our overall site, all the zoning characteristics, impervious and those kinds of things.
Okay.
Yeah, to piggyback on what Greg said, Brian, is the boundary line we show and this was strictly for showing conformance with the zoning requirements, impervious surface area, building area and things like that. So that was to make it clear that we came up with a boundary line to show that this building is in conformance with the ordinance.
So then I would envision when Building Two next door to it comes in, at that time, we'll see some kind of a subdivision?
Correct.
And just for Brian, for your, some of your earlier questions. You'll see this plan has bio-retention areas identified. So the overall stormwater concept is to control the more frequent, less intense storms at the site of each development. We've got some actually, some bigger areas here because the Building One site had a little bit of extra area. These are going to somewhat work in conjunction with the future buildings that are becoming in. So they do discharge primarily to one of the canals, but it's all in conformance with the Act 157 plan and the township's ordinance. So there's no, there's no direct discharge without getting through some level of stormwater management treatment first.
Just out of curiosity, is the police gun range on a property that you purchased or is on waste management property? is the police gun range on a property that you purchased or is on waste management property?
I I believe that's on waste management property, Brian.
Because it's it's somewhere in this neighborhood.
Yeah, we have a, we have an easement. There's an easement road that we grant to get back there, but the physical range is on another property.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I have one quick question since you brought up subdivision. Does North Point maintain the landlord responsibilities of all the buildings going forward? Or is that transition to somebody like JLL or CBRE to run the landlord day-to-day functions?
We we do all of our own property management. So it'll, all of the, you know, the park-wide common area maintenance will all be, you know, North Point run.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Mr. Jones, are you there?
Yes, sir.
Is there any issues on these review letters that you feel are unsurmountable or?
No, I do not. We've worked with the applicants engineer through the process and we're comfortable with the stormwater management and all things discussed tonight. I will mention that we obviously will also account for the overall impervious surface as it accumulates. And I would just point out that I agree that the developers agreement, the master developers agreement, the applicant agreed to providing sidewalks on one side of the street and and specifically requested waivers for for curbs until such a time where they're deemed necessary for stormwater management, just a refresher.
And that's, I mean, obviously, we're not privy to that agreement. So you're telling me that the waiver of curbs is in the agreement?
Yes.
And and that's not, and that's not, I mean, it is a public document that was signed. So we can be sure that that before the next time we're in front of the planning commission, I certainly have no objection to circulating that. So you can review it before we come in front of you next time.
Okay.
And I believe the final form, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, was that if it's determined that they're necessary for specific stormwater management. And in this case, I don't I don't think they are.
Yeah, I I think that's right, Joe. That's my recollection.
So as far as since you're not asking for waivers for anything else, as far as street trees and trees, you're all good with putting trees?
Correct.
So the Bucks County Planning Commission has recommended that in these curb islands that you plant trees. What are your feelings on that?
That's a good question. I I not in the truck storage area, but within the parking lot, we can.
Because I think that your landscaping plan shows trees in there, at least your your sketch shows them in front of us right now. But I think the planning commission would request an islands in the in the trailer parking, which is very uncommon.
Our our recommendation on the trailer islands is to keep them out because they will get hit.
Correct.
But in the in the parking areas, I know we show them here and I I don't, you know, I don't think we have any any objections to putting trees in the in the employee parking areas.
So just so you know, why I prefer to see curbing, because when I go to industrial areas like this and there's no curbing, then all of a sudden the parking lots become extended with stone and there's more trailers parked on them and it starts looking like hell, quite frankly. So but it's if it's in the agreement and it's not required by stormwater management, then I guess we have an obligation not to do it. But that's my concern about industrial places like this and warehouses. If you drive anywhere down around this place here, you'll see it. You'll see where the parking lots are just extended by stone and there's trailers and trucks and everything everywhere. And it just looks like a mess.
I think the curbs aren't proposed around the the island, the loading docks and the parking areas. I think the the waiver was along the the frontage road. But I believe there are curbs around the the trailer. I think the Bucks County Planning Commission was suggesting internal islands for the trailer parking, which is uncommon for for a loading dock. I've never seen them. And I think that's that's where they're saying there aren't going to be curbs or trees. But but there is perimeter curb around the loading docks, correct?
That is correct. The parking lot has curbing. Where we're not going to be installed curbing is along the existing River Road.
Right. So all the internal roads and parking have curbed?
Yes.
I'm fine with that. Why didn't you say so?
I thought we were talking about the
We're talking about a blanket waiver that's basically waves everything. So we can limit the waiver to River Road at this point.
Yes. So sorry about that, guys.
Any other comments or concerns from the board? Joe, you're good, right?
Yes. Right. So would that be then considered a partial waiver, not a full waiver at that point?
Yeah, I would say, I would suggest to waive curbing along River Road.
Well, the section, the section that's being cited is just for River Road.
One ninety-one sixty-two B, partial waiver for
Well, Joe says it only applies Joe says it only applies to the road. So
Okay, that's it. There's a full waiver. Okay. Yeah, it's a full waiver. All right.
All right, if you gentlemen don't have anything else to add, then I'll I'll entertain a motion from the board.
I'll make a motion to approve preliminary and final land development application on North Point Development LLC. River Road, TMP number thirteen dash zero five one zero zero one, Lot One A. Zoned MPM materials processing and manufacturing. Township of Falls, Bucks County, PA, JA JE A project number LD twenty-nine. Data planned December twenty-third, twenty-twenty, after reviewing McMahon. What would you call this?
Remington verdict.
And Remington verdict. Date, January twentieth, twenty-twenty-one. A waiver for one ninety-one sixty-two B and a partial waiver for one ninety-one seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight C two.
Seventy-eight C two, sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hold the board, yeah, hold the board, please, Ed.
Alan Henderson?
Yes.
John Hanny?
Yes.
Edward Crow, I'm a yes. Mary Lusha?
Yes.
Brian Binney?
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Have a good night.
Just for the record, there was no public comment. Uh, thanks. Thanks. You're gonna have to keep reminding me that, Kyle. All right, the last item on our agenda was to approve the minutes from somewhere.
Make a motion to prove
October twenty-seventh.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying.
All right. Your motion to Diane, are you there?
Yeah, come all silent.
Now. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Kyle, let me know.